Welcome everyone. I'm going to turn it over to Councilman Nelson, who's our financial wizard for the council.
No, you can just immediately then turn it over to you guys. Thanks for coming.
All right, here we go. Good evening, everyone. Breaking news stories. Oh, I'm sorry, we have the first slide. The police department budget's made up of three different sections. It's obviously the police department itself, traffic court, which is only two employees, and the police civilians, which is 23. All combined is approximately, was it 45 million? It's, I believe Councilman Nelson has informed me it's 39.5% of the budget.
Yeah, under 40%.
See, ask and you might receive. Um, is that good?
Yeah.
Okay, here's our breaking news stories of this past year. Obviously, our K-9 unit was reestablished. We'll talk some about that. Large snow event hits Erie again, Snowmageddon II. Just to hit on that real quick, I got a report today from our traffic enforcement. They've been doing Operation Off Towber Fest. So they've been out towing vehicles.
Oh, okay.
In October.
Who are following.
So that the streets, when we get to the bad storms, won't be the abandoned cars. In 2024, just in the month of October, they cleared 61 cars. And you remember what, you know, the snowstorm we had and how bad it still got. This October, they cleared 97 cars. I thought that was pretty important, so, just to give you a little update on that. Homicides, unfortunately, we started within, I think, within two hours of the new year was our first homicide of the year. Celebratory Tall Ships and Firefighters Challenge. Challenge, the police resources, it was a busy, busy year. Tall ships coming in, celebrate, you know, the week after Celebratory along with Firefighters Challenge made a real busy October for us. Only two VIP visits, President Obama, Vice President Pence, pretty easy. Big other news stories were the closure of State Street, and we worked with PennDOT on that. Still ongoing in the Bayfront Highway. We had several meetings and worked closely to try to make that work well. So far, I haven't had any major problems down there, so we're happy about that. The department's gotten seven new vehicles, over a million dollars worth paid by grants. And then our central operations remodel has begun, we'll talk more about that.
A question, I know we had a few accidents in the last few months. Were any of the newer vehicles those accidents by chance? Do you know?
Yeah, one, two, two of them.
Two of them, okay.
Two of them, yeah. One was substantial damage. Actually, three. One was our fault substantial damage, one was not our fault substantial damage, and the third new car was a minor. So, not bad. The garage does a great job, thanks to Public Works.
How is the officer doing?
Recovered, recovered and back to work. And his K-9 partner too. This page here is our calls for service. You can see since 2022, the calls for service continue to increase. Currently, we're in the 54,000. We project by December 31st to hit 63,000 calls. Part of that, I'm all going to attribute to the, we've building trust with the citizens that they feel comfortable calling. Crimes against person, you can read all those, but, you know, shots fired or down, I'll talk more about that. People's shots down, homicides went up, aggravated assault steady. The rapes were down, but the sex offenses went up by 61. And that's, you know, those are the indecent touching incidents and stuff, more are being reported, unfortunately, we like to get that down. Next page, we're talking about property crimes. Burglaries were down 36. And again, we're only talking the first three quarters of the year through October. Burglaries are down, thefts from motor vehicle are steady. Our thefts went up by 81. And also, you'll see the fraud went up 138. What we're having is a lot more, what we've never had before, were the porch pirates, you know, packages being left out and stolen. The phone scams particularly targeting elderly. And then there was some statewide fraud with the public assistance office, and those cases needed to be reported locally. So that kind of attributes why we had so many of those. The good news is, on the violent crime, the homicides, the national clearance average is about 52%, you know, it's a, it's a coin toss whether they get solved nationally. Here in Erie, over the past seven years, we're running about 90%. In the last four years, and I believe that's nine, 29, 30, around 30 homicides, all solved. And of those homicides, looking at the first three quarters of the year, 20 through 2025, you'll see the number of homicides on the graph. And then the orange is ones that we believe are gang related. And the good news is, in '24 and '25, they were both zero. All that work we've done over those last few years, targeting the Four Nation Gang with the feds, doing the drug work, doing the Rico case, we've, we've really reduced the amount of gang violence that we've experienced in the city. So that's a good number there. Just this morning, if you happen to read the newspaper, there was a study there out of Akron, Ohio, they talk about, they did a survey of adults in the Social Science and Medicine Report, talking about gun violence. And it says that they confirm what pastors, residents, and advocates told the Akron Beacon Journal. Each instance of gun violence ripples across communities affecting the physical and mental health of not just the victims and their families, but also those who never knew the vic, or those who knew the victims or witnessed the shootings. Increased risk of mental illness, including symptoms of anxiety, depression, and post-traumatic stress disorder. Stress lowers the life quality, social trust, and physical health. And again, that was in this morning's paper, just thought that was good timing. So the good news is, in the city of Erie, you can see since 2022, our number of people shot has continued to go down. Again, this is through the third quarter. Actually, it should be eight. The ninth one was in the fourth quarter. But you see that tremendous work that the department's doing to get those numbers down. We're in the 11th month, and so far, we're at nine total, so that's good. Of course, then the next one is, okay, we've had these shootings, not just homicides, so how are we doing in clearing them? In 2022, we solved 31 out of 62. That's an easy 50%, even I could figure that one out. Then I took out the calculator. 84%, 70%, 75%. Those clearance rates are above all the national averages each year. We are targeting the most violent people, and we arrest them and take them off the street, the rest of the community is safe. We talked about, we reestablished the K-9. Here's a picture of Bo, Atlas, and Deacon. This was their swearing in ceremony. And then we have our official department photo with the three brand-new Tahos before they crashed them. But they're doing great.
I just had to ask, you know, I know that they're really expensive vehicles, and I would hope that we're trying to, you know, mitigate the accidents on the newer ones.
Yeah, well, unfortunately, the one was, somebody came through a stop sign and T-boned it, but it's back, we're, we're back in full operation now, and luckily, those were paid through grants. Here's the numbers, and remember, the unit was established in February, but they went to Ohio for school for five weeks, and then we had some in-house training. So really, I don't believe these numbers start till May, and we don't have a complete year in yet. But just to look at the, the numbers there, I won't go through them all. I'll say though, that they, because of the dogs, they seized 27, the dogs can smell the gunpowder on the guns and sort, and find them for us. And because of their work, you know, one dog's trained to recognize narcotics, so over $18,000 came in because of their work. Then you see the amount of seized substances, I'll skip over that. Juvenile unit, that was one of our first units to come back with the ARP officers. From 246, last year was 256 to 268. So the, the trend is very slow going down, the number of juveniles that are being charged. But 40% of them are qualified for diversionary programs. So, that's a great number, and our detectives work closely with the juvenile probation department to try to get as many kids into those diversionary programs as they can. Switching to the crisis intervention unit, they've been around for a while, the types of calls, we've gone over this before. The new thing was that we have, we got a grant last year with the co-responder program. That's two civilian mental health experts. They work closely with the unit. Sometimes they go out with the officers, sometimes they just do follow-ups. But if the officers are identifying problems, they have two experts that they can call and ask them to follow up. We can really target issues when they come up, rather than just putting a Band-Aid on, hoping things are quiet for the night, and we're back there tomorrow for another issue. So, it's, it's been receiving a tremendous amount of community response in their work, so it's just been a, a great, great unit going on. On the overdose deaths, you can see the last three years, they've been going down, still 21 people dying in, within the first three quarters of the year, you know, which is, it's down, we'd like to see that keep going down. Our next page is our 10-year comparison of police overtime. At the moment, we are under budget. We'll talk more about that in a minute. There's a 10-year comparison on the next page. Like I said, I'm going to skip through these quick. The next page is the grant-funded positions in 2025, same as last year, there's 32 positions being paid by grants. The next page, you see the pie chart on it. These are reimbursements and grants for work that we've been doing with other agencies and grants for vests and different things. Total's almost $1.8 million. Last year, that number was 1.2. We've, we've increased it over a half million dollars, and we'll continue to work to find those grants to continue doing what we're doing, so we can get it under 39%. The next page, this is out of the, the regular budget book. You'll see that the department, since 2022, has been at 194 officers. Number of higher, new hires, retirements, we've had six so far this year. There's two medical that are still in the works, and next year again, we always predict about eight to 10 retirements. Next page is the current manpower. We're budgeted at 194. We had a couple of retirements, right now, we've been at 191. Long-term sick and injured takes us down 180 able bodies to perform, and last year, we were at 175. So we're a little bit healthier this year. Next page is about the population guide. And then we're into technology. And the only one I'm going to cover on here, because this is all the same as last year's book, was the last one, the real-time crime center. Fuse this, and Chris is going to take, take it for a second.
So basically, we were able to levy money from different grants and additional money to put cameras, quad head cameras throughout the city in strategic locations based on crime and traffic patterns. These cameras are placed throughout the city, so that we're able to monitor things as they happen. Typically, for instance, and I'll use a homicide, if we have a homicide within the city, the first night, the homicide detectives go, and they're doing all their interviews, day two, three, and four, we're backtracking video. You know, we find this video, and then we gotta, we gotta watch it and figure out where they go, and then find the next video and backtrack. Now we'll have our own camera systems throughout the city. We have roughly about 200 to 300 cameras up in the city currently. We're also placing license plate readers, so that we can capture license plate data throughout the city, as well as partnering with other agencies. So we just partnered with the Port Authority, and we're actually able to pull some of their cameras into our real-time crime center. This gives every officer the ability to watch an incident that has occurred, and also watch live data or live feed. So if we're having an issue in an area, an officer can stay parked in a strategic location, watch any kind of activity, and then move in if we need to. So we're in the process of setting up the actual real-time crime center, we'll have multi-computers and monitors and all of that. But just in the beginning phases, I mean, the officers have been using it left and right to capture high-quality, high-definition video of incidents that are happening. Day, day one, we went up live, we had a, one of our officers went down to the Port Authority because of tall ships to make sure everything was blocked properly or no parking, dinged on a stolen U-Haul van. We had a camera set up in that area where we captured coming in, and then identified the individuals that had taken the U-Haul. So it worked out really well, we've had a lot of good information coming through those. We can also start to, in the future, we're going to be sending out requests to other businesses and residents to get their information. Basically, it's a map where all our cameras are shown, and we click on it, we can see it, and we have multiple overlays for our computer-aided dispatch that shows up with the calls, our ShotSpotter, and some of other, other technologies. We can also live view body cameras and car cameras from that as well. So should we have a major incident, homicide, shooting, calls for service that, that multiple officers are going, the officer in charge or detectives can actually watch as things unfold live. So it's, it's pretty interesting, once it's all set up.
The, the technology in the last few years, through the grants that we've been able to bring in, it, it's beyond what I thought we could have done. And it would, the department will continue doing, doing that, working for the grants, putting this stuff together. Real-time crime centers are the trending policing across the country at major departments. And the fact that we can do it here is, is pretty telling of the quality of the, the work that these guys are doing here. So, I was happy just to have carbon paper.
Do we have cameras at 26 and Parade?
Yes, we have cameras in that area.
So, we're watching individuals park on the sidewalk constantly?
The, currently, the cameras are not necessarily monitored 24/7. So if we had a call for service there, we might be able to pull some data up, but we don't have, you know, a, a set of officers or officer watching every camera, as I said, we have about 300 to 350 that are set up.
Well, they, they stay on the sidewalk?
Yeah, we, I can, we'll make sure that we let somebody know that, so we can, we can monitor that.
You know, and I was told, well, they pay their tickets. Well, toll, boot them. If they don't care if they have the money to pay the tickets, and then they park anywhere, God forbid someone in a wheelchair have to go into the streets to get by.
We'll make sure the motorcycle unit knows.
How much does a camera cost to purchase and then, just to maintain and, and the data storage?
So, each, originally, when we started the project, the camera cost from the purchase to the installation was running around $10,000 to $12,000 a camera. We've got that cost down now to around $2,000 to $3,000. The reason the cost of the camera was so expensive was building the infrastructure, going from intersection to intersection. Now that most of those intersections are built out, we're able to add a camera roughly between $2,000 and $2,500, that's up and running. As we've progressed, we currently have what they're called archivers, or four, four servers that are holding all the data. As we keep expanding, we'll have to get more, we, we need to be able to keep some videos so we can go back and watch it. Retention depends on currently how much hard drive we have, how much hard drive storage we have. So we do have that in place, you know, and I, and I have to credit our IT department, our technology coordinator, and then Chuck Carnes from, from Public Works. If those guys weren't doing or assisting with this project, it would not have got off the ground. So those, those three individuals, Mike Fulkrad, Chuck Carnes, and Jason Lucchini, those three basically made, took the big heavy lift and, and made this possible. So, but it's, it's, you know, operational, if anybody ever wants to see it, we would, we can show it to you, just to kind of give you an idea.
All right, yeah, I really do recommend if you stop by and see Chris or Jason, they can show you what this system can do, and it's, it's mind-blowing, it really is incredible. Before, you'd have to go from this computer to that computer, and different drives, and all kinds of hurdles to get over. All right, the next two pages, I'm just going to say, they've been in the book, reasons for overtime, the, you know, why we spend so much on overtime. The next page is the overtime reimbursements, 2024, just caught that there. If that's updated or not.
It is 25, yes.
That is 25, just the year was wrong.
Yeah, I can change that.
Right there, it says we have about 12% left of our overtime budget, and unfortunately, we still have three pay periods. And of course, the most used vacation next to summer is, you know, between Thanksgiving and Christmas, New Year's. So, I think we'll get through the next pay period, no problem, but the last two might put us a little over there. Breakdown of comp time, we've explained that before, if anyone has questions, go ahead, but I'll keep this moving here for us. And then we're, we're back to Chris for the Internal Affairs Report.
So, to date, we currently have 29 citizen complaints that have been investigated or being investigated. Out of those 29, we roughly have, five have been sustained, one incomplete, two unfounded, one referred, and 20 of them have been exonerated. Currently, 54,750 calls for service breaks down to about one citizen complaint for about every 10,095 calls for service, which is, on average, what we're, we're getting every year. Complaints are typically staying about the same, they're slowly starting to come up, picking up a little bit more after COVID. During COVID, in the inception of body cameras, they dipped down into the teens, we're slowly starting to climb back up. Happy to report, though, most of those numbers are, or most of the complaints that I'm, I'm getting are able to be cleared within a day or two, specifically because of body cameras. And it's typically the type of complaint are either type of the citizen feels that there was some kind of neglect by the officer, or some type of, you know, there was rudeness or something to that effect. I'm happy to report this year, at 2025, to date, we have zero use of force complaints. We do not have any use of force complaints for this year. Last year, we did have eight of them, all eight were exonerated, seven were exonerated by video, one was unfounded. All eight were exonerated, seven were exonerated by video, one was unfounded. So overall, the department's doing very well, you know, and obviously, we are sustaining complaints. So, you know, that goes to show that we are seeing that there could be some deficiencies we need to improve on, and we are, you know, taking those actions to make sure that the officers out there are treating everybody with respect and doing their job.
And the citizen complaint form is right online, so they don't have to come down like they used to or go to a DJ's office to get the form. It's, it's online and they can submit it that way. We're closing in here. Said I'd try to do it in 30 minutes or less. The Police Athletic League, all I can say is wow. They're in their 10th year, gone from 35 kids and three officers at one school, that we hit the 2,000 mark. 2,000 kids are now registered with PAL. That's 102 police officers work it, along with other law enforcement agencies, teachers. Every year, a school district building has it, it's at four community centers. They hosted six summer camps, field trips, including Washington DC, New York City, Chicago, Gettysburg, Niagara Falls, and Pittsburgh. Mill Creek last year started, and I believe they're about to start a second school out there. And PAL has year-round wrestling and boxing.
Are the Mill Creek schools doing wrestling?
Mill Creek only has one school so far, and it's third grade, I believe. Next year, they'll have third and fourth, or this year, I guess, would be third and fourth, but they're talking about another school. The big thing is when we, you know, when you talk about capital, you know, here's a picture of what the front of the police department looked like. There's one of the clerks working, that's his workstation every day by all those wires and stuff. The remodel's begun. It's been cleared out quite a bit, it's looking good. That last page you'll see is, you know, when we move things out. You know, the best way to describe the cables and wires were spaghetti, it was everywhere, every which direction, and a lot of those were hanging underneath the drop ceiling because of the asbestos. Asbestos has been removed and they're making everything right. It's gonna be a very, very nice department. The officers, particularly the civilians that have to sit in there for their entire shift, really deserved this refresh. It's been over, what, 65 years? So we're glad that we could do that for them. As far as the budget goes, Lisa will tell you, you know, she gave us the, obviously, the, the raises according to the contract. We asked for a little bit more here and there, but nothing extreme. We want to keep it under 40, and we did that. So I don't, that's all I have, unless you have questions.
Yeah, I'll, I'll say, you know, and the 40% is a number that I'm the one that keeps touting, obviously. You know, that's, you guys, you guys are right at the spot now. I mean, that's, that's the really normal range. My first year, it was 44%. So you guys have brought it into 40. And then the grants that you guys have got have kept it, like, almost all departments are between 30 and 40%, but the grants you get are probably bringing you close to that 30% number. Like, that's, those are, that's a good budget. I'm, I'm really happy with it.
You know, the art money that was put into the revenue replacement program and all, all these other things I don't quite understand, but I can tell you this, and Lisa will repeat it, that we are good through 2029 to, to continue the department at 194 officers. After that, the department's got some more grants to look forward to, to try to keep that number up. If we slip back into the 170s, I don't know that we'll have enough officers to continue doing all that they do, keep these numbers down. But that's for future. As of right now, I think we've kept the budget pretty much on, on line with where it's been.
Keep reminding ourselves that we have to go after that grant money to keep these two salaries. Big difference, big difference having you guys in the city.
Any questions?
Three minutes over, sorry, ma'am.
No overtime, chief.
No overtime. Well, Lenny and Howard Stoll Lake, turn it over to them.
Good night, thank you.
Good night, thank you.
Okay.
No, I'm good, thanks.
I hope.
Now, if you guys could move everyone.
It's like that.
Yep. Good break.
There you go.
Thank you, ma'am. Good. Thank you, all right.
Everybody likes to see. And honestly, we've done it for the past few years, and I, I honestly thought the police would bring their dog, so we could not bring Cora's. Okay. Well, go by the slides. Real-time employees is 141 in this budget, it's up one. There's the numbers, you know, the salaries, you know, account for the contractual raises, benefits, and any operating costs. The key changes this year is we're adding an emergency management coordinator, an increase in our software costs, because everything has to have software, and then the contract arbitration that was awarded, which increased salaries. That chart shows you that personnel costs are the biggest cost, probably of the whole city, not just the fire department. That just shows the different, you know, numbers for how many we have of, you know, firefighters, and then all the separate parts, myself, assistant chief, you know, the deputy That's the cost to outfit a firefighter, $13,914. That's up $600 from last year, and COVID made it jump. It used to be around six. I mean, I go way back, I remember it at five. But every year it goes up. A few years ago, it went up a lot. And that's, you know, their turnout gear is the most expensive thing, that's just under $5,000 a set. Average cost of a firefighter, I think they figured it at a 15-year firefighter. That's, goes up every year just by the, you know, raises and the cost of insurance and cost of gear and equipment. Our total calls, I looked this up, took me a while, because I'm a little challenged when it comes to technology, but when we started tracking calls electronically in 2002, and I don't know that 2002 was a complete year, because that's when we started, so I doubt that that's a full year. But, you know, we were down in the 3,000, 4,000, and it steadily increased. It dropped a little bit in COVID, and then after COVID, it spiked, and we're on track, we're roughly around 9,000 calls a year. There, for the longest time, we were around five, we averaged five, maybe up and down a little bit. But since after COVID, we've gone up to 9,000 runs a year. And part of that's due to the EMS crisis that's all across the country. But our guys, in, in 2002, we had eight companies, now we have six. So we're doing a lot more with less. That just is a breakdown of all the different types of calls. Here's our overtime. Last year, we were slightly under budget for our overtime, which if Snowmageddon wouldn't have hit, we would have been, you know, under by a lot more. This year, right now, we're in good shape with our overtime budget. I don't know what is in store for the next six or seven weeks, but, so I think we're in good shape on our overtime. It was, you know, it went up consistently there for a while, but we've, we've worked hard to get it under control. This is our fleet. The Schember administration inherited an old fleet, and ever, and since then, we started with engine company number six, that's a 2019, and then engine 13, and engine 11, tower two. Engine 12 is still a 2003 KME. It's 23 years old. And according to the standard, next year, that should be gone, but it'll be a backline rig for us, it'll be a reserve rig. So, but next September, the new engine 12 should be here, and that'll go into the backline. For a reserve rig, the reserve rig they have right now is a 1993. And I can't say enough about our maintenance department, our mechanics, because they keep everything in good shape, even the, the 1993s. The guys don't complain when they have to ride on them, which, you know, three, four years ago, five years ago, when they got back to the spare rigs, they, they were complaining, why do we have to drive, why are we still driving this thing? So between the Schember administration and our mechanics, we're doing pretty well. We've started a, a rotation, because it was always the way of the city to buy five or six rigs at a time. And then you had five or six rigs that need replaced.
At the same time.
At the same time. And right now, five or six rigs need to replace, you're looking at $20 million. The prices are in there. I mean, some of those rigs were $300,000. Now, the, the last one we just ordered was 1.5. The tower truck that we ordered in 2022, 1.7, took three and a half years to get, right now is about 2.7 or 2.8 million dollars. Our dive truck, which was a 1978 used Stroman bread truck, we got that with an LSA grant. So that should last us for, for a long time. We also just ordered engine eight there, that's a 2014. We ordered that, it'll be four and a half to five years before we get it. And that will get us right in line to where we should be retiring our trucks into the backline, and that is also our most expensive truck to maintain. Our biggest problem with any of them is emissions. And that one is, was back in the first few years of a lot of emission changes for diesel engines and fire trucks. And it's, it's a constant. So that'll be good to get that one moved into backline, or maybe we just might get rid of it. So our, our fleet is, is doing good. Like I said, next year, we'll be backlining the last of our 2003s, which is, is really So hopefully, we can continue that to every few years ordering a truck to keep that going. Right now, nobody knows, and I honestly don't know, that these trucks that we're buying now is electronic and computerized and sensors and modules that they have, that we will get 30 years out of them, no matter how hard we try. So right now, we're doing good, and hopefully, we can continue that. We need to stay vigilant. I honestly expect for our maintenance division to have to hire somebody that is not necessarily a mechanic, that can service the chassis and the pump and all that stuff, but more of an electronics guy to keep up with all the computerized systems on the fire trucks. Is there another one? That's it? Okay. Any questions?
Year's warranty, do your trust have?
Five.
I'm happy you're getting the one that's been on back order. You ordered that how many years ago?
Well, the one that's coming in September. That, that one hasn't been too bad. It's, we, we lucked out, and that's only gonna be two and a half years before we, if, if they deliver it as promised, it'll be two and a half years. Engine 11 and the tower were three years for engine 11, three and a half for the tower. And the last one that we just ordered, they're predicting four and a half years. But it does nothing but get longer and longer. And it's not that they're, I mean, they all have some issues with people, you know, trying to keep people, but they just, they can only build so many a year, and the orders are backlog. Pierce just opened up a, a plant in, I think it's Kentucky or Tennessee, and they bought an old auto plant that was shut down to start building all of their cabs. They have two plants, one in Florida and the other in, in Wisconsin. Because they said we had to move to get a different worker pool, because they couldn't get anybody where they were at. You know, they've already exhausted the workforce, so they had to go somewhere else to get a fresh workforce to keep up with orders. But, but we're doing good. Pierce has been very good for us. That's where we're gonna stay with. You don't want four, six rigs and four different types, because then that's inventory and everything just balloons when you're trying to stock parts for different manufacturers.
May I speak now?
Sure. I just wanted to finish my thought there, that's all.
I'm talking about her. You talked about getting a person to deal with all the electronics onboard. Can't we get extended warranties to make sure that those things are taken care of? How are you gonna get one person to know the intricacies of all the different trucks as far as their electronics? Just a-
Well, that's, that's another reason why you have one brand of trucks. You don't have a fleet that has, every truck is different.
So one person will be able to handle it all?
Yes. I mean, you, you go to any of the truck garages around here, they all, the one, it's not that they're completely different, the basics are the same. Each one has its, their own differences, but the basics, you need somebody that has the basics.
The difference in hiring somebody or getting extended warranty on the different trucks, you pursue that at all?
They don't, extended warranties on, on big trucks, if they exist, are extremely expensive, and this is new, really.
I understand. That's why I'm asking a question.
Yeah, it, it, this is new. All the electronics, the 2019 has a fair amount of electronics in it, nothing compared to, to the new ones that we just got last year, and nothing compared to the ones that are coming up. Because the ones that are on order, it's one more step, they have to meet the new emission standards. So there you go, you know, differences in, in keeping up and stuff like that.
I have a question. I have a question. Do we, can you refresh my memory? When you assist other agencies, do we volunteer for that, or do we have somewhat of a reimbursement?
We don't get reimbursed, we reciprocate. They come and help us, we go and help them.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Chief, did I, did I see that you're in the calendar?
Third calendar, no appearances. Thank you.
Does anyone have any discussion?
Oh, pretty easy to follow along.
All right, you can call it. President?
Meeting is adjourned. Study sessions concluded.